Okay, it's six o'clock on Tuesday, January 19th, 2021. We're all the board of selectmen meeting to order. Due to the increasing concern surrounding the coronavirus pandemic, this meeting will remain closed to public. There are no scheduled public hearings and there will be no public order hearing. Live video and audio. The meeting will be aired on Comcast Local Channel 9. A recording of the meeting will also be posted on the West Bridgewater YouTube channel. Please join me with the pledge of allegiance. A religion to the God of the United States of America and to the Roman Republic of Israel, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and freedom. Thank you. Okay, first on the agenda at six o'clock, we have Treasurer Collector Scott Golda.
Hello.
Hi Scott.
Tonight I'm asking the board to vote on the awarding of a bid for a bond refunding. A refunding is similar to a refinance and can take place on bonds that are at least 10 years old if the circumstances merit savings to the town. The bond we are refunding was originally issued August 1st, 2008 for $6,975,000 for a variety of town projects. After the FY20 payments were made, there was 1.91 million remaining and the winning bid came in from Fidelity Capital Markets at a true interest cost of 0.368%. That is down from a 4.3% when we did it 12 years ago. This new bid will result in lowering the outstanding amount to $1.87 million along with saving over $200,000 in interest costs, reducing our debt on this issue by over 12%. If you have any questions, I can answer them.
Any questions?
No, that's great. Down 12% is awesome. And I believe the statistic on this, it's incredible.
Advisor, who's been doing this for 20 years, said it's the lowest she's ever seen it.
Scott.
We've helped you guys.
Okay, right, David, did you have any comments on this?
Well, first of all, I just want to say really good job to Scott. Because as he said, we don't have to do this. And the fact that he was proactive enough to do this to save the town money. So really good job on Scott's part, thank you. So before your lawyer is providing you the entire vote, unfortunately, what I would ask this chairwoman to do is to read, as it says, voted. And unfortunately, you do have to read it in its full direction.
Okay, of three pages?
That is correct.
Well, sit back folks, because it's a long one. Okay, voted of the Board of Selectmen. I, the clerk of the Board of Selectmen of the Town of West Bridgewater, Massachusetts, the town, certified that at a meeting of the Board held on January 19th, 2021, of which meeting all members of the Board were duly notified and at which a quorum was present, the following votes were unanimously passed, all of which appear upon the official record of the Board in my custody.
So did he, this is gonna, that part there, because it's gonna get signed, that says it up top. So the motion is going to say words to the voting, which is your next word.
That's all I have to read?
Nope, from there all the way down. So just say, I move to vote, and then everything else that's on there.
Okay.
Please.
I move to vote that in order to reduce interest costs, the treasurer is authorized to issue refunding bonds at one time or from time to time pursuant to Chapter 44, Section 21A of the general laws, or pursuant to any other enabling authority to refund all of the outstanding principal amount of the town's $6,975,000 general obligation municipal purpose loan of 2008 bonds dated August 1st, 2008, maturing on August 1st in the years 2021, 2023, 2025, and 2028. Collectively, the refunded bond. And that the proceeds of any refunding bonds issued pursuant to this vote shall be used to pay the principal redemption premium and interest on the refunded bonds and costs of issuance of the refunding bonds. Like a bedtime story. Further voted that the sale of the $1,870,000 general obligation refunding bonds of the town dated January 1st, 2021, the bonds, to Fidelity Capital Markets, a division of National Financial Services LLC, at the price of $2,138,029.92. And accrued interest is hereby approved and confirmed. The bonds shall be payable on August 1st of the years and in the principal amounts and bear interest at the respective rates as follows. Do I need to read this chart?
I think you could say that was presented.
Okay, as presented on page 3. Further voted that in connection with the marketing and sale of the bonds, the preparation and distribution of a notice of sale and preliminary official statement dated January 4th, 2021, and a final official statement dated January 12th, 2021, the official statement, each in such form as may be approved by the town treasurer, be and hereby are ratified, confirmed, approved, and adopted. Further voted that the town treasurer and the Board of Selectmen be and hereby are authorized to execute and deliver a continuing disclosure undertaking in compliance with SEC Rule 15(c)(2-12) in such form as may be approved by bond counsel to the town, which undertaking shall be incorporated by reference in the bonds for the benefit of the holders of the bonds from time to time. Further voted that we authorize and direct the town treasurer to establish post issuance federal tax compliance procedures and continuing disclosure procedures in such forms as the town treasurer and bond counsel deem sufficient, or if such procedures are currently in place to review and update such procedures in order to monitor and maintain the tax exempt status of the bonds and to comply with relevant securities laws. Further voted. So this page has parts that are in brackets and taken out. That's typically what that means. So are the parts in bracket to be read or the part in brackets not to be read?
I don't see the brackets on my copy.
Yeah, I have them on mine, like surrounded by where it says may be executed. And the second, it says further, this is on the second paragraph, further voted.
Yeah.
Do you see it?
Those are just providing explanations. You do not have to read the brackets.
Okay, so what's contained within the brackets is to be read, just.
So further voted, may, and then skip within the brackets.
Okay, okay, got it. Further voted, may executed in several counterparts, each of which shall constitute one and the same document of a signature to a document by. This is very difficult to read with these brackets.
I agree. Can we just take a quick recess?
Okay, we're going to recess for a moment while we get a better document to read, okay? I am on page 2, second paragraph. Further voted that any certificates or documents relating to the bonds, collectively the documents, may be executed in several counterparts, each of which shall be regarded as an original and all of which shall constitute one and the same document. Delivery of an executed counterpart of a signature page to a document by electronic mail in a PDF file or by other electronic transmission shall be as effective as delivery of a manually executed counterpart signature page to such document. And electronic signatures on any of the documents shall be deemed original signatures for the purposes of the documents and all matters relating thereto, having the same legal effect as original signatures. Further voted that each member of the Board of Selectmen, the town clerk and the town treasurer be and hereby are authorized to take any and all such actions and execute and deliver such certificates, receipts, or other documents as may be determined by them or any of them to be necessary or convenient to carry into effect the provisions of the foregoing votes. I further certify that the votes were taken at a meeting open to the public, that no vote was taken by secret ballot, that a notice stating the place, date, time, and agenda for the meeting, which agenda included the adoption of the above votes, was filed with the town clerk and a copy thereof posted in a manner conspicuously visible to the public at all hours in or on the municipal building that the office of the town clerk is located or, if applicable, in accordance with an alternative method of notice prescribed or approved by the Attorney General as set forth in 940 CMR 29.03, Section 2B, at least 48 hours, not including Saturdays, Sundays, and legal holidays. Prior to the time of the meeting and remained so posted at the time of the meeting that no deliberations or decision in connection with the sale of the bonds were taken in executive session, all in accordance with GL Chapter 38, Section 18 through 25, as amended and as further suspended, supplemented, or modified by the executive order of the Governor of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, Chapter 38, Section 20, dated March 12th, 2020. Dated January 19th, 2021, and signed by Meredith Anderson, Clerk of the Board of Selectmen. Okay, any questions? And all those in favor?
Can I hand yes?
Raise yes. Thank you, Scott.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Scott.
Bye.
Okay. We'll move on to approve the minutes of December 2nd, 2020, and December 16th, 2020. Is there a motion?
Some move.
It's her second. Okay, all in favor?
Can I hand yes?
Raise yes.
Anderson, yes.
Okay, authorized tree removal list.
So we asked the board to do this every year. Per Mass General Law, our tree warning determines as to which trees are most likely to have to be removed over the next 12 months and also what trees will be vastly trimmed as well. He's provided a list to you of both and as such, he's asked your permission to be able to remove and trim trees as requested.
Is there a motion?
Some move.
Is, are there any questions?
I was just scanning through the list. Do we, does it, are we concerned at all about the amount of times we lose electricity and the impact of the trees and our electricity? Is that something we discuss? Or not? Maybe it's not something we discuss.
I don't.
So I assume that Chris takes that under consideration when developing this list.
Okay, I didn't know if there was any sort of conversation related to that. I just, it looks like the number of trees has been going down compared to 2015 and 2016.
Well, the reason that trees are probably going down is because of our budget. So we budget the same amount of money every year and we have to rely on a private vendor. So I'm, not that I've spoken to Chris, but we know as vendors' costs go up, we can only take down so many trees if our budget has not increased immensely, which it hasn't, but in the same budgeted number. That's my guess as to why we have fewer trees. But Mary, if you don't mind me asking, what was the original question? It sounded like you said something about electricity, but maybe I misunderstood that.
Yeah, I couldn't hear it very well.
Oh, I apologize. No, I, it seems as though we've been losing electricity a little bit more often. So I've been asked, why aren't we taking down more trees? It's not a conversation I've had with, with any of you. It's just a comment that I know I'm going to hear that I'm going to hear after this meeting. So I guess I'll bring it up now. If it's budget related, at least then I have an answer.
Yeah, so I would say this, in speaking to Chris about this in years past. Chris, we know Chris, he's a landscaper by trade. He doesn't want to remove trees unless he has to. So I feel pretty confident in saying that if the trees made this list, these are trees that have to come down. These are the trees that cannot be saved. Regardless of whether they're next to a utility pole or not, they're either the most dangerous, the most unhealthy, they're the closest to the roads and because they're on town property, whether once they remove them. And so I felt pretty confident that that would be his responsibility was here.
Dave, a question, if there's a tree on a resident's property and it's a large tree, those limbs are growing out over the road into the electric wires. Does that, that falls on the resident?
It would, or probably call National Grid.
Okay.
National Grid might term it out because they have a vested interest in removing those limbs. But we would not touch it because it's not on town property.
Okay, because many times you do see trees and you're looking, you don't necessarily know is that town property or not because what I understand, that changes from road to road.
Right.
And even sections of certain roads, it changes how far back it is to be someone's tree. So really, if it's on a resident's property, it's their tree and it's growing into the wires, they need to be proactive and contact National Grid.
I would say so.
That's good information, thank you.
All right.
Was I supposed to vote? I'm sorry, yes?
But yeah, so we, so we have a motion, all those in favor?
Can I hand yes?
Raise yes.
Anderson, yes.
That's unanimous. Okay, discussion on potential pilot with De Bartolo Development pertaining to road improvements on Route 106 and Lincoln Street.
The developer is with us, hi Rich.
Hello.
Oh, as we all know, unfortunately, we did not receive the Mass Works grant. I think that this is a worthwhile project that will provide pretty long-term positive benefits to the town. The project really can't go forward unless there's vast infrastructure improvements on Route 106 and Lincoln Street. And that is really not specific just to its development, from my standpoint. Quite frankly, these are improvements that the town desperately needs, regardless of whether a development goes there or not. The developer would like to be able to still develop his property and as such, he recognizes that he also needs these infrastructure improvements. And so he's willing to fund the money upfront for the tax rebate plan is to be reimbursed over time. Then be in the details, how much, how long, that type of stuff. And we have in the past had a TIF committee. For example, we did Chair PAC over on United Drive. Meredith happened to be on that committee at that time, representing the finance committee. And so the proper process for the town to engage in this is similar to a TIF, which is a tax incremental financing plan, is that we, we would need a pilot committee aiming at lower taxes. And the difference is, for anybody listening, is that a TIF requires certain trigger mechanisms in order for a TIF to be approved at a state level that are not triggered as part of this development because it's too early in the process. So the other option potentially is to look at a pilot, then aiming at a lower taxes. I did speak to legal counsel today, he is still reviewing the legalities of what it is that we're looking to do. But I would like to be able to move forward as he continues his analysis on this. And so the process going forward would be to name a pilot committee, which I will make a recommendation in a moment. Begin negotiations with the developer as to what the terms and the conditions of that pilot agreement would be. We would then bring it back before this board and this board would then have to approve it and then present it at town meeting for their approval. If after negotiations at the pilot, we bring it to this board and the board does not approve it, they would have to go back to the committee for renegotiations. And either we could come to something that the board is in favor of, or we can't. If we can't, the process dies. If the board approves of it, then you would place it at town meeting and the town meeting would have to approve it as well. In reference to the pilot agreement itself, it is historically, it's a, I was thinking a TIF agreement. So a pilot committee would, marrying it would be as follows. A Board of Selectmen member, myself as town administrator, somebody from the assessors' office, this committee, and Scott Gold as Treasurer Collector. In this case here, most TIFs happen to occur on private land. Again, think of Chair PAC, there was a private building on private land. This year is going to be road instruction improvements. That means actually public property, we own it. So as a result, I also think, because we may have to have some zoning issues, setback issues and/or planning board concerns, because they still may have to pull some permits through the planning board. I think if we want to streamline this process and be fair to all parties, is that we should have a member of the planning board and a member of the zoning board of appeals on there as well. So therefore, they can bring their expertise in those areas to that committee. And I would leave a committee of seven.
Okay, unless there's, unless there are any objections, I'd like to be on the committee.
I have no objection to that.
Okay. I'd like to be on the committee and I'd also like to recommend that we have a resident on the committee. Dylan Cragan had reached out to me as soon as the agenda was posted and expressed an interest in being on the committee. He seems to have done his homework. I mean, he researched already the difference between a pilot and a TIF. He's fairly new to town, well spoken, and I think he would do a good job at representing the residents on this committee.
Yep, and if, and if, you guys are free to have however size and however many people you want it. There are two things, is that the committee gets larger, it gets a little bit more cumbersome. And the second thing is we should do it in odd numbers. So if we are going to name an individual, the person you mentioned earlier, my only recommendation is to add another person. We don't really have time to table it to another meeting. So if that were to be the case, only because we'd be working in a street layout, I think it would probably be appropriate to have our DPW director as that named person. So therefore, it's odd. But again, that means you'd have a committee of nine people. So just, you know, as an FYI.
Yeah, well, while it would be a large committee, I think you also have, could have issues with attendance. So do they need to meet a quorum?
They do.
So they, they would need to meet a quorum and this is, I think, the biggest project that's come to town in a while and where it has to do with widening 106. I think it's a major concern to everyone in town. So I think the more people we have on it, especially with a resident having an opinion to put forth to is important.
Nine is a lot. I only mentioned it from being on the finance committee. It was really hard to meet quorum when we had nine people. And I've met Dylan, he was super helpful at the community bill day at the playground. I liked him, he would be great. But I agree, we'd have to go to nine people. And I don't know, I feel like everyone that's been taught or that you're talking about adding to this committee already speaks the language of, of the situation between the assessors and the planning board and all the different committees being involved. I'd be tempted to lean towards seven if I had a, if I could share my preference.
So I think, do we have to take a vote because I'm pretty stuck on nine?
Yeah, I would ask because if the board doesn't have any objection, Rich, you don't have any objection.
No, I don't feel like I, I don't feel like I have a voice in this. It's however the town wants to manage the committee. And if it's seven, if it's seven, if it's nine, it's nine, I understand.
So that wasn't the part I was referring to. Is that I would like this committee, because we have a lot of work to do.
Right.
And quite frankly, this is by far our busiest time of the year. And town meeting, I counted today, is still only 118 days away. All right, it is coming up and we have a lot of work to do on this. So with that said, I would like to start having this pilot committee meet probably next week.
Absolutely.
I would need to have the committee named so I can reach out to those individuals, select a date and time, and start the process. So unfortunately, I think we do need to take a vote and I think we have to settle on seven or nine. If it's the seven, who those seven are, if it's the nine, who those nine are.
Okay, so is there?
Can I ask a question before?
Sure.
So what's the reasoning behind, I don't know who this person is. So what's the reasoning on adding him, I guess?
So he's been, he's been, he reached out to me. He's been following this right up before town meeting and after town meeting. And as a resident, he has concerns with not only what's going on on Scotland Street, but also with this particular project and the amount of traffic it will bring to the town that we currently don't have. He's, you know, he's spoken to the fact that when we were looking at having the Mass Grant pay for it, we were getting our road widened. It wasn't costing us anything per se, although we were sacrificing because we were going to have two, or we may still have, two large warehouses in a retail, two or three store retail on Route 106. So as a resident, he was, he's concerned with how this impacts the town. At the same time, he understands the financial side of it. Everyone who intends to be on this committee thus far is also not only representing as a resident, but they also have an official title with the town, at least on a board or a commission. He's coming in strictly as a resident. And we don't too often have residents volunteer to be actively involved. And like Meredith said, she's spoken with Dylan, I didn't know you knew him. It's well spoken and he has a genuine interest in getting involved in the town and I wish we had more people coming forward.
That's very good.
I mean, I have.
One second. Yeah, I think you were talking. Okay.
I'm sorry, I was just going to ask what time of day the meetings were going to be at and if that should be taken into consideration at all.
So we talked about having the meetings at 3:30 and especially on Wednesdays would be a great day because town hall's already open and Dylan is making arrangements so he can attend at 3:30.
This person sounds like they don't have a neutral point of view coming into this.
Well, I'm not sure I have a neutral view going into it either, I'll be honest with you. This is not, this project, I had an interest in this project, a great interest in this project when we were getting the grant. Now we're not getting the grant and we're looking for our taxpayers to pay to develop Route 106, make improvements so that this project can be more feasible. I'm not a fan of this. However, I'm also open-minded and willing to listen to it and see if it's, you know, mutually possible for both of us, the town and. I'm sorry, I forgot the name of the company. I apologize.
You can just say Bartolo or Developer, it's fine.
Thank you, thank you, the development company. So, I mean, one could say on one hand that I'm not a good person to have on the committee, but again, I'm open-minded and I believe Dylan has those same capabilities.
At some point, with Dave's guidance, I'd like to just walk through a little bit of how we're approaching it.
Okay, we're not ready for that yet, excuse me, Rich, we're not ready for that yet, but we'll, we'll give you a couple of minutes. Anthony, you wanted to talk a little bit?
Yeah, so I mean, I, I don't really feel passionate either way on adding this person and another person or not. So if we have a volunteer who's willing to contribute and put in some time, I mean, I don't have an issue with it. I, I guess I'll make a motion to appoint the nine members. David stated adding this individual, I forget his name, and Chris Anatelli.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Can I hand yes?
Raise yes.
Hand it in yes.
Okay, that's unanimous. Okay, so we have the committee named. You'll reach out to Chris and.
I'll reach out to all of them.
Okay, yes, please, everyone. Okay. And at this point, Rich, if you wanted to go through your presentation, we'd appreciate that.
Sure. Can, can I just pick on one thing? Are you going to confirm the Wednesday at 3:30 or am I supposed to assume that for now?
Oh, David will confirm that.
I'll confirm it with you. That's what we're going to shoot for. When Denise and I spoke earlier, that worked for her. So I'll reach out to everybody else. I've not spoken to any of the other members, but.
Okay.
But we should be okay, but you'll be, we'll be in touch.
Not a problem. Not a problem. Yeah. So yeah, you know, and I appreciate your transparency about maybe you're not the best on the board with your opinion of the project not getting the mass works. But there's not much to go through here, but the update is, I think, important for you to at least wrap around what we're trying to do now that the town has neither gotten the mass works grant or any type of bond issuance to fix the current road conditions, which are atrocious. So just as a quick background, I believe everybody on this call has, I don't know if other people have signed in, have seen some of this in the original presentations to the town, the finance committee, this board of selectmen. But it's a spitting image, different colors. We'll deal with all that in the planning part of dealing with the town. But it's a 350,000 foot approximate warehouse, 36 foot clear heights. We're, we're, you know, delivering a shell condition. We don't have a tenant in tow. So I can't say it's a certain tenant with a certain amount of jobs. But it's physically what you see down on Elm Street. The site plan, if you go to the next slide, Lorna, thanks, is not changed dramatically because we were trying to work through the next steps once the mass work grant was notified as not being issued in November, late November. There's a highly likely chance that this, and I don't want to make promises, but at this point, we're only going to build a single warehouse. The secondary warehouse is, is a 50/50. Simply because there's a significant amount of earthwork improvements and import to the project, which is more of a technical total dirt volume issue. So even though the conceptual site plan shows all the development as originally submitted for rezoning and everything else and planning previously, the initial phase will be the 350,000 footer as, as was previously, you know, provided in presentations.
Can I ask a quick question? Is there still a plan for sidewalks down Lincoln Street?
Yes, there's been no movement to our agreement to provide sidewalk on our project side where we could control where the sidewalk goes. Okay, so we have both in this, you can't really see it in the zoom. But at the end of the day, what was presented in the rezoning, I heard everybody loud and clear and would like to have a sidewalk, at least extend down. What I can control, I don't control the other side of, of Lincoln Street, of course. So we do have a sidewalk in that plan as well as what I previously presented on our side that runs the length of our property and would connect to arguably the road improvements once the design is finalized and the scope is finalized, which is the next slide. Okay, so just reminding the, the board, the, the efforts that the Bartle has taken to date is secure. Not just a potential purchase of the Haciote, 72 acres, but it's also a residence, personal property in his home residence, which is Mr. Dempsey. We are under contract to purchase his home as well as a portion of his retail establishment as necessary and at de minimis impact to his existing retail to provide a four-way intersection fully signalized. This is the original concept plan that was submitted in our traffic study back in the summer to the town. And this is really the scope and focus of really the committee moving forward and everything else we're talking about from dollars, tax, anything to do. It's really this slide. So it's an important slide. Not only that we'll be going through many times with the committee, but just in case any other residents have any questions or whatever, this one will show what's going on. To what David had said earlier, we control that parcel as a buyer. It's a necessary parcel to work on the geometric alignment of the center line of Crescent. But there is project improvements on all four sides, including slight widening in the north side of 106, which again goes to what Dave said. And we have to figure out what you guys do have right of way access to, what you don't, what the utility companies have conflicts on. That's all the fun stuff that we'll have to uncover through committee and figure out, which can be the ultimate work. The only other thing I'll talk about, just putting it maybe a data point for everybody, is our project as provided in the traffic study is not providing any type of increased impact to the intersection. The previous zoning with the shopping center was a five-fold to 25-fold impact to the regional roadwork and infrastructure. The entrance that we have into our property also further exacerbates any impact of traffic coming inwards from 106. But the current functionality, and I know we all know this because we all have white knuckles. The current functionality of a non-signalized offset roadway configuration today is basically at an F. Work, it's failing miserably. So this project and our ability to both purchase this building, which is not in the future cost that I'm showing it, $650,000, we are putting in to purchase land, which is not technically appraised value worth that. We're already providing that. I just wanted to say that so people understand on the board that we're going above and beyond just our development requirements inside our four walls. Happened to date, and we've all lived through 2021, is the next slide, Lorna. Just showing where we're at and projecting where we'd like to be or however it goes. And I know that it hasn't gone well and it's hard a little to see it the way it's zoomed out. But in December of 2019, we entered into a purchase and sale agreement on these little pieces of property. So it's been over one year that I've had a purchase and sale agreement with these two entities. In September of last year, we were successful and thanks to everybody, especially the town voters, we got approval to rezone to this project. We heard that we're not going to get a mass works grant, which I didn't want to milestone that because it wasn't positive. But what we're looking to try to do, to the, to Dave's point of, you know, every day matters to us. We would like to move forward and concurrently work with the committee on road work improvement, scope, dollars, appraisals, all the other things that we'll have to do to come back to the board of selectmen with a bona fide agreement that both meets town council's approval and the committee's approval. Is work with planning, work on my onsite plans in February and in March, start our permitting process. Project. I do not believe we'll be able to be so good that we start permitting the roadwork by March. But they would be permitting and working with your planning and zoning and, and everything else on the project. The goal today for our company is try to start construction in May. We know that we can do all these other things concurrent and have it ready to start construction in May. But in the proverbial tail wagging the dog, we will build this whole project, again, the single 350,000 footer in a basically one year, maybe 11 months, depending on the weather. The roadwork is absolutely got to be done in place and signals operational before we open one building door for operation because the roadwork lies in this property, which is why we've always been tethered in this goal of trying to figure out how to fix 106. So to be able to start construction is always our goal. So we can project interest carry, project all the other things that we have to do, deal with now instead of wait five years to do stuff. The issue is going to be how quickly, if we are successful, and then get a form that's approved and then take it to town vote. I'm willing and we have to, and this is part of, again, our investment in this opportunity, is I have to start drawing the offsite plans. And I believe Dave already has quotes when he was going through mass works grants. That's in the tune of 200 to $275,000 just to design the roadway improvement plans. So I've got to start doing that on your roads to then figure out what the scope is, get the pricing, get the committee approval concurrently. But if we did approval on the total pilot or whatever this final document is, is called, I would be willing to move forward while I am permitting with state entities, which is the one group that's really not represented on this call. And I don't know how long the mast dot process is to approve whatever the town decides is the improvements that we all want to do. But I'm showing a project completion effectively 13 months after I start, and that's the timeline that we're operating on today.
So I think what you're asking us is to move up our town meeting or how, I'm sorry, not move it up, but have a special meeting?
I can't, I can't ask that because I don't know how quickly we'll be able to be productive in committee. Assuming we're productive in committee and we have an ability with your notice, I would say please. But I'm not necessarily going to hold up starting construction if we've really met the measure within the committee and it's coming back to selectmen's approval. I know it's not ratified and truly approved until it goes to a public vote. But I feel if we're going through a nine-person committee, one of which includes the selectmen, and then we come back to board of selectmen, something that's acceptable to committee and selectmen. Anybody in the town that didn't want the road fixed. And I didn't hear anybody in the town, including you, that doesn't want the road fixed at zero taxpayer impact to your budget. So I'd like to just show you where I'm at. I'm not selling this as our final, but I want to walk through how we're approaching it. We've done tests with other organizations, other municipalities. And this spreadsheet, we can send out the actual spreadsheet. It's not a lot of high math. And you might want to zoom it in unless you have it printed out yourself. But just to refresh everybody, the current taxes on the agricultural land that's now rezoned is $89,551.14, which we are currently paying those taxes on a monthly basis. Staying to the top of the screen for a second, sorry. I, I grabbed a valuation, talked to the town of Bridgewater and how they're evaluating, but also Dave Gagne in our assistance to kind of get prepared for this one, did talk to your assessor. And we're grabbing a number, which will ultimately be the actual number, whatever, however the town assesses new construction. It's in the $17 million for everybody. I'd rather not announce the purchase price of our land, but it'll be calculated in here in just a second. But this valuation is really meant to represent how other appraisers appraise a vertical building. It's based on square footage, cost of construction, replacement value and other things. The building value could be somewhere in the neighborhood of $14,000 to $15,000. There's a massive amount of earthwork improvements, but really when appraisals come in, it's usually as improved. It's not the cost of constructing a land. So you usually have land price, replacement value or the assessed value of whatever building is sitting on it. And then either improved land or unimproved land. Those are usually kind of the three ticks for the appraisals. Again, it sounds like the assessor is going to be part of the committee, so they'll be able to opine on this number. It'll be what it is. I feel that it's going to probably be in the 17, maybe 16, maybe even 20-ish. I don't know. Once you guys finally get it in. Once it's fully assessed, and we talked about this, Dave and I briefly, day one of construction, all you have is dirt. Year two of construction, all you have is building under construction or almost done. So appraisals, as we all know, at least the process of it is you appraise it this year and then you attach it based on what it looks like. So year completion of '22 appraisal for the land is just catching up. So the table on the left side here is really a projection of what the appraisal is going to look like on this project, which is not diluted. It's just how it's projected. So this would be partly for the finance committee and everybody to start honing in on. Well, basically in 2021, we have the same taxes as we do today. 2022, we have the sale of the land, which most likely will hit the appraisals office and that will hit some tax value because the cost of the land will be then affixed, but there's really no improvements because it just started construction. Construction is complete in 2022, so by 2023, the appraisal is kind of caught up to a fully developed site. Hopefully operational, but operational and not operational. And then from there on, I just took two and a half percent bumps and annual increases. Again, it's just a projection. It's not meant to juice it. It's not meant to say, hey, look how much you're going to get. It's all written right there and you can kind of see the increase in taxes right out the bat once we get this building complete. So the town with no road improvement costs, again, just talking about that, would be reaping this type of benefit. Unfortunately, we got to get the road done to get to the benefit. So the upper right corner of the spreadsheet is absolutely a budget preliminary. There's inputs, but we've got to get into the details. And this is where we also start designing and figuring out the scope of work that we can do and then getting contractors provide this number in. It could be two and a half, could be four. I'm using three and a half because that's what we've selected right kind of since day one. This is kind of how it breaks down. Hey, we see contingency and then I have the interest on it. Down on the right is simply how quickly and when the money is hitting the appraisal against spending the money on three and a half million dollars. Not any other, you know, magic in it. So in 2021, I'm spending design costs and I'm starting construction maybe on the road in late 2021 or maybe beginning of 2022. It really doesn't matter. But by the end of construction, I've spent the 3.5 budget. Now starting to get assessed ramp up, we're starting to say, hey, we're taking the additional taxes against our assessment, I mean, our spending, and it's getting repatriated back to the person that put the money out. So basically through this process, it gets repatriated back in 10 years. That's, that's all this is showing you. Years is what three and a half million takes. This would be the central discussion and focus of anybody on the committee and where we would focus on how to deal with this three and a half million. Whether it becomes two and a half million, which I think we'd all rather do, like we'd like to have the most improvements we can with the least amount of cost. I'm just picking a number that I think is going to be fairly down the middle on the project. We were involved with the town of Bridgewater for their road improvement.
Before we move off that spreadsheet, can, can we come back to it?
Nothing else, just to give you color.
No, I'm just trying to understand the bottom right corner and try to understand that calculation better. I followed everything until you got here. What's the interest at 7%?
It's the, it's, it's the value of money. So if the town were to do their own road improvements and Dave Gagne got some quotes on bonds, and by the way, way to go whoever got their bonds redone with that great rate earlier. That's, that's awesome. 20-year, 15-year, 10-year and five-year payments would be on yours. So there's the cost of money over time. If we put out 3.5 million dollars in the first two years and the town's not having to put any out, we are out 3.5 getting it back over time. And I'm not saying it's seven. I'm not saying it's five and a half. I'm saying it's eight. The town can borrow money a lot cheaper than I can. But at the end of the day, it's compounding the balance remaining after a reimbursement and then putting a 7% interest on it. For example, the 200,000 goes back.
Are you expecting the town to pay 7% interest?
I'm expecting the town to have an opinion and dialogue of what my money is worth versus the town having to do it. I think that's the negotiations and discussions we can have, whether it's seven or one and a half, which I think your borrowing rate is, which I don't get. So I'm having, I'm not able to use that three, five anywhere else as well. But it simply shows that over the payback duration of the taxes, which I've estimated the two and a half percent increases, it takes nine years with a time value of money interest calculation. If the town eventually says we don't want to pay time value money interest calculation, then it's up to your druthers to do whatever you like. And that's your voting. I, I'm not sitting here saying I'm just out three and a half million dollars. Had you got your mass work grants, I wouldn't be out any money and I'd just be starting construction.
Yeah, I would be, I would not be in favor of paying interest at 7%.
Okay. Okay.
Without taking, I mean, we're not going to get into a vote or anything now, but I don't think anyone would be, have any interest in paying 7%. I, I'd like to, unless you have more to present, Rich, I'd like to kind of wrap this up. I think, you know, we need.
I do.
Okay, where, you're looking at a, a March timetable. I'm, I'm, I think I'm safe in saying that is not going to happen.
No, March, that's not what I said. I'm sorry. That's why I wanted to talk about it.
Okay. Okay, um, and, and the reason I say that is between um, committee meetings and our meetings being twice a month, I, I don't see anything like this getting on to the town's floor until our May meeting.
And that's, that's why.
You're looking at.
Meredith, I mean, sorry, Meredith, that's why I painstakingly tried to walk through. If we can get in through our committee area that I'm comfortable that we're meeting, just like this comment, which I appreciate very much on the interest. If we're moving in a direction that makes sense for us to develop, even though we haven't gone to town for a full vote, I'd be going concurrent on my site planning and my permitting, not the road permitting. Two separate things, I can start permitting, I could have started permitting before you got Mass Works grant. Or not. It's approved, right? This project's approved, I can start doing all of this stuff, but we're never going to develop it unless the road is put in place. Online, so the critical path is figuring out the road. I can do things concurrent, so I'm not trying to move to a town special vote in March and I don't want you to think I asked for.
Okay.
No.
Okay, at this point, you know, just to, for you to be as prepared as possible, so that when this committee starts meeting, you know, we hit the floor running. Um, you know, more about with how this is going to look, what you see for road improvements. Have you ever done a project similar to this? We, you were responsible for the redesigning and the road.
Yes. Yes, we just finished one, it got eighteen point two million dollars in Moni, uh, Massachusetts. And it's a full tip, which included not only interest, but mortgage payment and interest to fix the infrastructure of their town. I've done it and the interest was at eight percent, not at seven percent. But it's a different town and by no means, but we go through TIFs, DIFs. I don't know the last time we did a pilot, but we're following town, town council once we get input. We can figure out how to do things. What we did in Bridgewater was simple. We helped them by bringing project to their project, I mean, to their city, town to win the Mass Works grant. They also already went and got bonds to do the road work as well because they were trying to induce business. So in Bridgewater, they paid a hundred percent of the road and their taxes are significantly less than West Bridgewater's. Formula for me coming here is, I didn't know if we could even fix your road problem. Road problem is for us to figure out how. And it looks like it's falling on us to do it because the town isn't going to float bonds and isn't going to do it. And I'm willing to move forward in this and put our, again, it's projected three and a half million up and untap the potential taxes benefit to the town because it doesn't exist without us developing the land. I have been approached from other groups who are interested in us to fix the road, but they have developments up and down one oh six. It's our job to fix the road for every other and untap all of the future development for one oh six and fix the roadways, which I'm not even whining about it, I'm just saying they're happily sitting back asking me where I'm at in the process and can I share drawings and can I do this and can I do that? So we have an issue here that we would never develop the land. It has to be fixed. So if I have to come up with a solution with the nine person committee, I know we can find a solution. I'm absolutely positively sure we can find a solution. As transparent as I can start. And after this, it's going to be simply scope, dollars, confirmation of tax generation and what is fair and reasonable that the committee can vote for. The board can vote for, and then ultimately the town can speak for themselves. Um, I love the process, I'm not afraid of it, um, but we know we have to fix this road.
Do you have some better renditions of what you foresee for the road work? Going to have more because.
I, I, you will. So going back to, again, the investment to date by the Bartolome is I have a house that I have to buy for six hundred fifty thousand dollars. Twenty-five million dollars. If the town wanted to do the road work, they'd have to buy that house and then pay for the road. So we're committing dollars to make this all happen. If the town had gotten Mass Works, Dave, once he got all the paperwork and approved done, would have released an engineer to start designing. Process of it. On this process, which I'm glad at least you're saying, let's go down the committee process. I am going to start spending a bulk of that hundred and seventy-five to two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. The hundred percent drawings for our first committee. But what we're going to do is start getting our traffic engineer, our surveyor, our wetlands experts, all of these people speaking to the committee about what happens when this road goes from this to that. And then deciding where a sidewalk can fall and where it can't because there's a big telephone pole or they don't, you guys don't own that tree or I don't know what the heck it is. But all of those things happened on Elm Street. And it's done finally, which is good. The difference is I've got to figure out it with your committee and the first step is defining scope, how far it goes, how many lanes. Hope, I, I hope we're not putting bike lanes on one oh six because some towns may want to do that. But there's different things that eat up space versus cars. And it's really, I'm going to be taking orders, kind of like a request. So our engineers can then say what can happen. And then we're going to disappear and do some drawings and sketches and some furthered refinements. It's a long process to get a hundred percent construction documents. That is definitely not going to happen in two months. It won't happen in three months probably, but we'll be able to come up with a defined scope. I'll use for that cost, which will be hundred percent defined in the future, once it's hard dead. Taxes, tax generated and the terms and deals of us moving forward and putting forth the money upfront. So all of that can happen fairly quickly, but to your point, I don't have anything better today because I haven't been approved to move forward into a committee until hopefully you haven't voted today.
Yeah, that, that's the point I was making when we get to the committee. Will we have some better renditions? Not necessarily at the first meeting, but at the second meeting.
We'll, we'll have a full timeline, we'll have a full timeline. And based on whatever happened in today's call, I have a call with the engineers and the surveyors. Luckily, our surveyor has actually done some recent survey work on one oh six, so he's got a jumpstart on another project. And he was a surveyor and the engineer was the uh, group that worked on the market basket uh, rework when that went in years back. So they have some historic information they can draw fun from, but we still got to go out there and uh, start surveying is the first thing because we can draw really quickly. It's just what's in the way. Water goes, when you move a road and it gets in a range, we have to figure out where the water goes.
Yeah.
One of the biggest things.
Okay, um, David, anything else we need to discuss? Anthony?
No.
Meredith?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Okay, so keep in touch with David, he'll let you know when the committee plans to meet and we'll go from there. Thank you.
I do appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
Thank you very much, thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Um, discussion on principal assessors contact, contract.
This is on the agenda for tonight. We came to my attention over the weekend that the principal assessor for the assessors has requested a contract for this year and for next year. And also has placed a new item onto the agenda that I wasn't aware of either. So I'm looking at this in direction from this board. So first things first, um, at last year, when we approved the Board of Assessors budget as contract was expiring in June and they had placed a five point nine six percent placeholder increase in that line from eighty-five thousand to ninety thousand. And over the past eight or nine months, um, as the H R person and myself were vetting the contract, there were different areas that we were vetting. Uh, we thought that we had come down to basic terms. Approval on that, and then literally yesterday, uh, this morning, we received an email that said um, we are, that he was looking for more than two percent, which was approved at town meeting. And system with what the Board of Selectmen did, we, it's not arbitrary. Everybody that was not under contract, we provided two percent increase to everybody. It is what we got funded at town meeting, it is what we all agreed to. And now that he's looking to more than that, um, I would like to be able to inform the Board of Assessors that they really should, although they have contractual duty and obligation and and um, and authority to sign a contract, that they really should be signing it to two percent that the selectmen approved, the pink car we've advised on in the town meeting. Uh, in addition to that, because he can only sign a one-year contract, he's looking to sign two contracts, one for this current year, which is fine. July first, which is FY twenty twenty-two, that's fine as well, he's doing it the right way. And as you know, we just sent out a budget message. And as part of that budget message, we have asked everybody in town, knowing that we have lack of revenue or, or reduction of revenue. It's for everybody to take a zero for this one year. Last meeting, I signed a new contract, I was under contract, we tore it up, I voluntarily went to zero. Heads that are under the Board of Selectmen, we've asked them to do the same, they've all agreed. We have asked our unions to do it, two unions are ratified, a third one, union has brought to their union and the other two have been communicated to it that, um, that they're informed and aware. The water department, their contractual employees have agreed to zero percent. Our health agent, who is a contact with the Board of Health, he has agreed to the zero percent. And the school committee has brought the zero percent to all the union employees at the school department. Because the, the discussion that we had back in the spring is if everybody in the town agrees to the zero, let's bring it to the school. So in essence, we're trying to get zero across the board for everybody. And the goal is, is to say, okay, as revenues are declining, we know why, we don't have to explain that. As revenues are declining, let's save the jobs that we have, let's keep our good employees, let's continue to deliver the services that we serve, that we're delivering to the public. Hold is that he is now going to look for a two percent increase for FY twenty twenty-two. I would like to inform the assessors in the direction from the budget message that we sent out, that's already been approved by the board. Is that this has already been addressed townwide. And that's an outlier. So I would like to write that memo. But again, I thought it was important and incumbent to bring it to you as the board, as I just found out all this information. Placed on the agenda, it was outside of, within the forty hours, but it's time sensitive to tomorrow night, so it fits with the open meeting law provisions. And so I'm looking for direction from the board because if you agree with me that we should stay with the two percent that we all approved or you all approved back in the spring and that everybody is going to take a zero this year, then I would like to be proactive. Send that memo off to the Board of Assessors tomorrow, so that way when they go into executive session and they negotiate that contract, they are placed on notice as to what the percentage increases should be.
I absolutely have my support, a hundred percent.
Yeah, I agree entirely. Have there been any votes or has this been in any meetings or has that been an executive question?
So I was, I was in executive session, I'm going to say about three and a half months ago. And at that point, the discussion never came up about compensation. Quite frankly, I thought compensation had been settled because we'd already agreed to the two percent, it was never discussed. At that point, there was um, debate as to whether or not he could sign a one-year contract or a three-year contract. We received a legal opinion, I read the state law, it was pretty clear it's one year. I did research with all the other South Shore towns, found out that almost all of them had contracts, contracts on one years or some one year. And presented that and then the assessor then had a conversation with the attorney at the Department of Revenue and verified that it should be one year. So that did happen three and a half years ago, but all this other stuff from three and a half months ago, but all that other stuff took place in the meantime. So unfortunately, I thought the salary was never a contentious point. Uh, we never discussed it. So um, the only time that I have been there and the only time to my knowledge that this has been discussed centered around term, not compensation. So there have been no votes to my knowledge in reference to compensation, I expect that to occur tomorrow.
Is everything else consistent with the town's longevity? Rotation of cool or all over?
Or conditions?
Yeah, so from, from um, I did a quick read of it from what I could tell from a benefit standpoint, for the most part, it was consistent. What was not consistent is his request that I've repeatedly informed the board that he cannot do is to telework, meaning work from home as opposed to work in the office. And that was going to be the second area that I was going to address. Because not only is he looking to place in the contract, he actually also placed it on the agenda. And what I'm interpreting, because I've not spoken to him, what I'm interpreting is, is that because when you do a contract, you, you assuming that it gets approved tomorrow night in executive session, it needs to be ratified, open session. And they don't have an entry on their agenda for that. So I'm going to presume it's two weeks later at their next meeting. So the fact that he placed on the agenda as well for permission from the board to stop to work from home leads me to believe that he wants to do that in theory on Thursday, their meetings on Wednesday night and not wait till that contract is, is ratified. So that was the only other benefit area. And again, I'm going to look for the board's direction. We don't have a work from home condition. Where everybody comes to work and we provide services to our community. Prior to COVID, we all came to work and did our jobs. Right now, the town hall is closed to the public and we know why, but we use technology to be able to communicate effectively with our residents. And I think overall, we've done a pretty good job because I've received very few complaints and yet everybody seems to still be doing their job. Back in March of twenty twenty, this boy took a vote empowering me to be able to make a decision because we knew things were fluid and working fast. And so after a period of time, I made a decision to close the town hall, everybody work from home. In the summer, we brought all our employees back and it's COVID and they'll reopen to the public. But as COVID cases began to escalate here in the winter months, I made a decision to close the town hall to the public, but have employees come to work. We also spent tens and tens of thousands of dollars getting the town hall ready. We added PPE, we had plexiglass, we had a whole bunch of things and whatever anybody's individual request was, including that department. We added all of that. And we want to keep people safe. So I feel very comfortable that people, especially with the public not being able to enter the building, we don't have that many employees. So we can keep everybody social distance and allow and require people to come to work. And so we've done that. And I think you all know me by now. I don't like inconsistency. I can't have ninety-nine percent of the employees coming to work and one person working from home. I have a fairness issue with that, I have an equity issue with that. So I want to make sure that the board is still in, in favor of empowering me to make this decision. Because if so, I'm going to send another message to the Board of Assessors. This is multiple messages, this is not the first one, but I want to send an additional message that says there is no work from home provision. A work from home provision is going to occur if and when, and hopefully it doesn't. But if and when we close the building and allow or empower all employees to work from home. I'm hoping we don't have to get there, but that's a decision that would be made for the entire town hall. And again, I spoke to a legal counsel multiple times on this. The Board of Selectmen have jurisdictional authority over the building. You set the hours, for example. You determine which office belongs to what department. The Board of Assessors, their responsibility, besides hiring their principal assessor, is it determined on a day by days, on hour to hour basis? What do they work on? For example, it's not our role to go down and say, work on building permits today and work on exemptions tomorrow. That's the Board of Assessors' responsibility. But your obligation is to say, when and how and at what time are we going to be open to serve the public? And so it falls into that category. So as long as this board still wants us to have um, to come to work and if we're going to make a change, it would be for all and not be individually selected, then I'm looking for that support so I can send that memo. If you feel differently, please let me know, I won't send it. But I do feel strongly that we have to treat all our departments fairly. And Mr. Donahue, along with all of us, need to be at work on a daily basis.
So I agree with everything you just said. I think that's the message we want sent and the only thing, well, at least I agree to that.
I totally agree.
The only part I would add, David, is, you know, that you said that there haven't been many complaints thus far. I think that's because the public is empathetic to the fact that, and when I say public, our residents are empathetic to the pa, pa, uh, the fact that the town workers are working. It's, it's not a huge building and, you know, the transmission rate is very high. So I, I think they have been um, patient in wanting to get their town business done and understanding that people may not be accessible when it's convenient for them, for our residents. It needs to be convenient for our residents, we're public servants. So that means we serve the public when they need to be served, not when we so choose to serve them. So I don't think it's fair for one person to have work from home when there is no town policy.
Yeah, I would have to say as both an employer and as a parent, consistency matters so very much. I, I need it to be the same across the board, it's not fair. So I have to agree. Um, so I have to agree, um, the consistency matters, I'm a little bothered that, uh, we approved the budget, and now this individual is looking for a different salary amount, that seems, um, a little unprofessional, um, honestly. Uh, I'm really surprised by that. Um, so yeah, I think we need to send a very clear message. Everyone needs to be treated the same. Same policies, everybody else is at work, we all going to be at work too.
All right, I'll make a motion to send a letter.
Second. Any further question or discussion?
Can I hand yes?
Raise yes.
Anderson, yes.
Thank you.
Uh, communications and reports from boards, commissions, and town officials, we have none. Senior tax work off policy amendment.
Yep, so, um, so we have a great program in town. And so seniors are able to work, um, and have a reduction in their tax through the exemption process. We historically have had thirty three to thirty six seniors take place, and this money comes out of the assessors overlay, that's how it's paid for. Uh, and the seniors have to come to work or replace them, the council agent director does an excellent job. They fill out applications, she places them with each department head's approval, and then they work, they help out our department head, they help out our departments, and then they receive a percentage off on their taxes. Um, this past year, we hadn't been able to fulfill the full mission of it, because, you know, they're seniors, and with COVID, we didn't want to see any, anything bad happen to them if we could help it. So with this year, um, the, uh, minimum wage rate has been increased at the state level, and so therefore the council agent director is asking to do the same, so we made that minor adjustment for the dollar hourly rate. And what used to be an allowance of eight hundred and fifty hours, working so many hours, now translates into a thousand dollars per person. Um, and historically, we have approved this, assuming thirty six residents, but, um, she's already received enough support and requests that she could fill forty one positions. And I know you've consistently looked at, how do we help out, and how do we do a give back, especially to our most vulnerable people in town. So putting all of this information together, I think that it's a wise change in our policy. And as a result, what the request is, is that we would move from thirty six employees or thirty six residents to forty one. We would increase it from eight hundred and fifty dollars to one thousand dollars, and therefore we would increase the overall aggregate cap to forty one thousand dollars.
I don't know if you have that.
Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Second, any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, call for the vote.
Can I hand yes?
Raise yes.
Anderson, yes.
Thank you. It's unanimous. Correspondence from the public to determine a course of action, I don't believe we have any. Public comment, period, none, town administrators report.
So thank you, so again, our COVID update is, as I said, every single Tuesday, we update the town as to how many numbers we've had week over week. We had forty this past week. That is our fourth consecutive week, week, week where we've had forty or more active cases in town. And since the very beginning, we have now had four hundred and forty total people test positive. This does not include an employee that doesn't, that works in town that doesn't live in town, this is seventy residents who are in town. On a positive note, we did start administering our vaccine last week. Um, our public safety, uh, was able to take advantage of that, so that's both our, our fire department and our police department, along with our nurses, were able to take advantage of it as well. Uh, we'll wait now twenty one days, because they'll have their second dosage. And we're waiting on guidance from the Department of Public Health, because we'll move into February, which is going to allow people over the age of seventy five, or the people over the age of sixty five with two or more underlying conditions to be able to receive the vaccine. Who will administer it, we're still working on it, really, they're still working on it. And then phase three, probably presumably sometime in March or early April, we would move to, uh, general public inoculation. So I've had a conversation, some of the rumors that are abounding from the Department of Public Health, I, in some private industries, for example, CBS, right, um, they could certainly do it. But some of the other thought process, I shouldn't say rumors, but different, um, where they think, like, how can we do it in the most effective way? One of the plans, there's about eighty nine different plans, um, is to have each municipality handle its own residents. So at some level, that's positive, because we know the town better than anyone, but obviously, we have limited infrastructure, we've never done it before. Um, and, um, and so we, and we have to be able to store it. So, you know, we're working through that process, I've, I've talked to my fire chief, I've talked to the Board of Health Agent. Um, and we've already started the process of reaching out to medical professionals in town, that when, if that were to occur, could we have a bench, if you will, of people who would be readily available? So one just be our EMTs, we may have others, because we're going to inoculate, say, seven thousand people, have the ability to inoculate seven thousand people. We're not going to do it with six people. You know, we're going to need, we're getting a bigger bench. So numbers are rising, um, they're fairly steady week to week here, but they are still rising at the state level. But we knew that, we expected that, we'll show, we're going to see that for the next four weeks. Um, and the positive is, at least we're getting the vaccine out there and getting it into the system. And hopefully, they'll continue to ramp up.
Is the death rate still one? Still at one?
Um, the percentage of deaths continue to decrease.
No, I don't expect a lot of the actual number.
Yes, I'm sorry, the official number at this point is one.
That's correct.
Um, and the last thing, it's just a disclosure, um, everybody received a town census this past month. And unfortunately, on the back, there was a misprint. The, the vendor who did it, um, they put the town of Rainham as opposed to town of West Bridgewater. So we've had some residents calling, because they're concerned, they want to make sure that they don't lose their voting status, or they consider being a resident. Um, we shouldn't want that, um, so, um, so we're not going to spend thousands of dollars to reprint it, and also it's fifty cents postage, so we're not going to do that. Um, the reality is, is that it's just a misprint, it was a clerical error. And, uh, Annie and I talked about it, and we've asked every single board in committee to actually address this, so the more people watch every board and committee, they get the information. We've also placed it on our social media sites, our website and our Facebook page. And just letting people know, we apologize for the error, do not worry about it, you are still registered in West Bridgewater, you're a West Bridgewater resident, we have you in the system. Please fill it out, it's important, send it back, we'll handle it, and there'll be no, um, you know, there's, there's no negatives from, from having a misprint on it. Just let the board know that at your next meeting, we will be starting budgets. It'll be a busy three months, because uh, February, March, uh, will be budgets, April, we will then be voting on budgets and capital budget items, so warrant articles, and then we'll be transitioning into a May town meeting. Right now, we have our May town meeting scheduled for May seventeenth, it has to be posted fourteen days in advance. So we really have to have our, our work done by May first, so it's, it's going to go pretty quick. Other than that, thank you very much.
Thank you, when, when is our next meeting, our next board meeting?
February thirty.
February third, and what time are we meeting at, are we going to go back to seven, or do we want to try to do it earlier?
Uh, since we've tried on six thirty.
Six thirty, okay, six thirty?
Well, we're going to start at six o'clock. Um, for Eldon's presentation, and we have a six thirty, um, public hearing.
Okay, so February third, we're starting at six o'clock, okay.
Alright, so yeah, okay, go ahead.
Okay.
So our traditional meeting starts at six thirty.
Yeah.
Like Anthony said, there's a vote for six thirty, so we're expecting every meeting forward, unless you guys change it, we'll be at six thirty, but
Okay.
There is a, a, um.
So it's at six o'clock, the next meeting.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, all right, so unless there's any other questions or comments, I'm going to ask for a motion to adjourn.
So who?
Second.
Are all those in favor?
Yeah. Can you hear us?
Raise yes.
Yes.